So I also have a few slides here alone from the city and their consultants that show some of the efforts that they've undertaken in the design that they've advanced on the parking lot. So what we have shown here is a rendering of the design and some of the concepts that have been presented. We have some of the existing buildings that are currently under construction, the Calvin Development located right here. West of Chestnut project already completed, located right there. And what we have here in front of you today is this parcel right here, which is the R1 parcel, which is the proposed project. We have 15-story high-bribe building with 124 residential units and approximately four gases for retail commercial space in the ground floor. We also have the proposed parking garage and additional future developments shown here, which is still in the conceptual stage at this point. So what we have here is an aerial overview of the same area. Our site again is in the northwest corner, located right here. Opposed building with a small footprint, it's about 7,500 square feet of footprint on a roughly 0.7 acre site. And again, we have the proposed parking garage reference located right here and access to the parking lot off of Revere Road there. And improvements also for the city project contemplated on Cottage Avenue, Dennis Ryan Parkway, as well as the inside of the site as well. In addition to the site elements, the city is evaluating as part of the development of the Hancock Lot. There's also utility improvements on Cottage Avenue and Dennis Ryan Parkway. There's drainage to the parking lot that needs to be rerouted. There's a large sewer main that needs to be rerouted up Cottage Avenue down Dennis Ryan as well. This is a cross-section taken through the proposed parking garage showing the proposed Chestnut Place building. Behind it is a four-story garage that's currently proposed with one level of parking below grade and a 15-story residential building located closer to Cottage Avenue on this side. You got Revere Road on the right-hand side there. So this is a graphical depiction of the proposed project. Again, it's about a 0.7 acre site. The actual building itself is going to be located on a parcel that's about 13,000 square feet. I'll get into that in a second, but this is generally what's proposed from a site standpoint. The access to the building is going to be provided off of Dennis Ryan Parkway. Right now, that's a two-way road. There'll be a new public access one way coming off of Dennis Ryan with short-term drop-off and parking for the residential uses of the retail space and additional parking along the east side of the property as well that's also going to serve the commercial spaces on the ground level. So with this building, again, it's about 7,800 square foot footprint, 117,000 square foot total building, square footage combined for the retail, commercial, and the residential space. And that's all located on the ground floor with the residential on floors 2 through 15 above. The main access to the building for the commercial spaces will be located along the front, residential lobby at the front as well. All the loading activities will occur at the rear of the property with sufficient space to turn around for trash deliveries, residential moving. That'll all occur in the back so that the limited impact to the surface traffic in the surrounding area for that. In addition to the interior building elements and the site access, there's also going to be a dedicated amenity space for the resident use outside the building, basically gathering space that they'd be able to entertain in a warmer climate. So again, this is the parking garage. This is where the 16 service spaces available on the site. In addition to the 16 spaces, there's also an agreement with the city to provide 130 parking spaces in the lower level of the garage that's currently being developed by the city. So there's an agreement in place for that. With that level of parking, that significantly exceeds the requirements in the zoning district, which is only half the space per unit. So we're providing 146 spaces when the actual requirement's only 65. So plenty of parking provided, which won't be an impact on the neighborhood from that standpoint. We have requested relief on that transportation study as the city is advancing the design in a comprehensive manner for the entire parking lot, and they're factoring all the potential development in the area. So this project will be part of that comprehensive traffic study that will be developed by the city. So again, the parking garage, just for reference, shown right now in the design phase. They'll be above-ground portion that's four stories. There'll be one level of below-ground parking that'll let direct access to the building below grade. They'll come up with elevators to serve the residential uses above. In addition to the improvements on the site, one of the agreements, one of the conditions that the applicant's agreed to provide is the landscaping of a future park that will be left over as a result of the city's work in the surrounding areas and the public improvements and the utility relocations. There'll be a park that will be city-owned on the corner there. The applicant is committed to designing and constructing all the landscape improvements on that park, as well as maintaining them in the future as part of their overall maintenance plan for this site and that parcel as well. That design will be developed and it'll be presented to the board here as part of the future meetings, and we will also be working with the city as well. So here we have a site plan showing some of the easements that I briefly touched on before. The white area that we have in the center, that's the actual parcel that will be owned by the applicant, 13,526 square feet. The other colored areas around that parcel are going to be easement areas that will give certain rights to the public and the applicant to essentially access to that area so that pedestrian connectivity is maintained and encouraged through those areas, as well as vehicular access to the parking lot areas and loading in the rear. So from a utility and a grading and drainage standpoint, right now, the site all slopes away from Dennis Ryan Parkway to the south to the interior of the site. All stormwater right now is collected by cash basins in the parking lot and then routed directly through the series of drainage culverts to Town Brook. It's on the east side of Revere Road there. As part of the proposed project, we're maintaining the grading patterns and not really deviating from the existing grades in the site. We'll be installing new stormwater cash basins, water quality units for treatment, providing additional recharge where there currently is none, and water quality and connecting back to that system. Through the project's construction, there's going to be a significant view with addition of landscape areas, about 6,000 square feet. So in addition to the improvements, there's also going to be a production in the paint areas on the site, which is a benefit on its own. Right now, the design for the stormwater utilities is to connect with the existing infrastructure that's there right now. As the city's design is advanced for these off-site improvements as it relates to the stormwater and the sewer, we'll continue to work with them to make sure that any revisions that need to be made to the utility design to account for their proposed project are coordinated and signed accordingly, and ultimately we retire to the proposed infrastructure if it's a time it works out that way. From a utility standpoint, again, the stormwater recharge chambers are shown here, the connection to the existing infrastructure and the application. Sorry for that picture being a little greeny. The sewer connections, there's some existing main down Dennis Ryan Parkway. There will be an increase in sewer flow as a result of the new construction here, but the existing infrastructure has capacity to be able to handle that. I would say goes for the water connection to the existing infrastructure, the street gas connection, and electric served at the rear of the site. The new transformer tied into the recent high utility improvements construction as part of the city's work in that area. So here we have, this was better. Here we have a floor plan of the ground floor of the building. So what we have here are the commercial areas that are on both sides of the main entrance. This is Dennis Ryan Parkway on the bottom of the page, Cottage Avenue, separated by that landscape parcel on that side of the page. The retail frontage will be highly prominent to encourage and engage the surrounding areas and promote the pedestrian activities there with a lot of windows and exposure to activate that space. It's about 4,200 square feet. The frontage on Cottage Avenue will be prominent, as well as the frontage along Dennis Ryan Parkway. There's interior recreation space and amenity space in the rear. And as previously mentioned, there's loading and moving access at the rear of the building with a central elevator core. So here's a typical floor plan. The floors 2 through 4. It's 124 residential units. It's a mix between two bedrooms, one bedrooms, and studio units. The actual breakdown relates to the unit distribution is 76 two-bedroom, 24 one-bedroom, 24 studio units, which you have highlighted here, the two-bedroom units, which vary in size from about 880 square feet to about 1,000 square feet. We also have the one-bedroom units here, which vary in size from about 700 square feet. And then we also have studio units to go on each floor, which are about 500 square feet. All the finishes on the building, interior and out, high-end luxury type finishes, going to be hardwood cabinets, ready countertops, in-unit laundry. This is essentially serving all the tenants well. As a typical floor plan, the floors 5 through 15, very similar to the lower levels, and after there's two-bedroom units, one-bedrooms and studios on each floor. So what we have here as well are elevations. On the left, you have a front elevation. On the right, you have the rear elevation. The main residential entry is in the center and the two commercials on each side. So the exterior is a historical design concept with stone and brick on the ground levels on the floors 1 through 4. It's going to be a very nice finish, mirroring the historic content of Quincy and some of the surrounding developments in the area. And then the higher floors, floors 5 through 15, are going to have a slender wall, pre-cast panel system with the full limestone finish. Again, a very, very nice high-end finish, and there will be a metal seam roof on a steel frame. And again, all steel construction on the building. Elevations from the left and the right, say consistent finishes on the floors as you move up. And as part of this process, we feel that this is consistent with the urban revitalization district guidelines, and it really advances the notion of what the city and everybody wants to see in this area, in that this is going to revitalize Quincy Center. It's going to activate the street level through the use of the retail on the ground level and the new park space that's going to be created on the corner that's going to encourage the pedestrian activity and create a space for them to gather. And we're happy to answer any questions or turn it over.
Chairman members of the board, just so I can let the board know, this mattered before the city council on Monday night for the LDA. I know we worked consistently with the city council applications here. We met with them. There was a hearing for the downtown committee on last, this past Monday, and it's being heard by the council this kind of Monday. We hope to resolve the LDA issue at that time and work on agreement. With regards to this applicant, I need the board to know, this applicant has been committed to the city for many, many years. I know they want to make this a landmark. This is going to be a luxury residence, and I think, again, on behalf of the applicant, I'd ask the board to consider this as we rest forward. They more than willing to have worked with the city. I think they've shown that in the past. They're going to show that in the future. I think when this is all said and done, we go through the LDA, we go through all the planning and board process, I think this is going to be very part of the building they're going to have here. So at that point, that's the presentation. Now, I know the planning department has to go forward with their due diligence and their work, and we're going to be before the city council on Monday.
I want to see if there are any questions from the board.
Thank you for this presentation. Will this be one of the tallest buildings in that area, 15 stories?
Yes, it would be.
Taller than the Stoppage Shop headquarters building or?
I believe the Stoppage Shop is 10 stories.
So it would be five stories taller than that. So that's, this will be a visible building all around from the city.
This is not going to be an attractive building. It's going to be an attraction. It's going to be something people are going to want to see.
And it looks like a beautiful building. I want this to build on a member of Barry's comment on the previous project, seeing how it looks from some of the key gateway spaces along Hancock in both directions. What does it look like? I imagine it's beautiful, but it would be helpful just to get that sense.
Will we be able to provide such to the board as to come in from Hancock, coming from the other end, coming to the lot or the park?
I appreciate that. And you've mentioned the park, is that a public park that will be maintained?
Yeah, so that will be a public space and owned by the city, and it'll be full rights for the public to use. It will be constructed by the applicant, and they will maintain it as well. So it will be fully for the public use on the upstairs.
And then I imagine maybe we don't know, but the commercial, the detail, that's the vision, are restaurants, traditional detail, I mean, what is the?
They haven't gotten far along with any collective tenants to be able to propose what that might be, the retail, commercial, general use as well with the background. Something that matches what else is happening.
Number Barry.
I think the member who came so touched on a lot of things that I'm curious about, like the public space is probably something that in this Quincy Center area is extremely important. And could you just walk me through how that design will play out and, how that design will play out and, you know, who could have a say in what that final part was like? Because I'd be looking for functionality and to Mr. Harding, if we're drawing people in, want to make sure that it's a space to be used.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm going to jump in here and just say a few words on this project because it is an urban renewal project and, you know, part of the park area is city land. It's not being disposed of. So the city has a very strong role in the development of public space, not only for this building, but for the entire lot. So if it's appropriate, you know, could I say a few words? The certificate of consistency before the board tonight is the fourth one in the Quincy Center Urban Renewal Plan. However, this is the first one that is a land disposition agreement, meaning, you know, this is the first one where the city is actively working with this developer on unlocking new development sites on city-owned land, namely the Hancock Lot. This proposal here is the result of this board endorsing the Fourth Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan this past spring. In that plan, our strategy was to focus on unlocking the Hancock Lot. We felt that that was the fastest way to getting new development in the downtown post the master developer agreement with Streetworks. That Fourth Amendment contemplates a new public parking garage on this site, and it also contemplates a number of infrastructure improvements to this site. Those infrastructure improvements, we sort of internally classify them as implementing public improvements, and that's city water, city sewer, stormwater drain. And part of the approval of the Fourth Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan came with it a district improvement financing, funding request to begin the design for the city to implement those. And I'm here to report that currently, the city has under contract, working for the city, three engineering firms that are working, advancing the development goals on the Hancock Lot. The first firm is Desmond Parking Associates. They're under contract to design a new public parking garage. There was a reference by the applicant that the garage has a sub-level in this presentation, and there's also, that would connect to his building. There was also a reference that the city council is currently reviewing the land disposition agreement. Part of that agreement, the city is identifying this applicant as the developer of that garage so that both the garage and this residential building will be built at the same time. I think that's pretty important, obviously, because parking is one of the areas of most concern to this board. The answer to that is the city is financing, designing and financing that garage that will serve this project, the general parking needs of the area businesses, as well as the potential future developments in this lot that are going to come before this board. In addition to having Desmond Parking Associates, the city also has the engineering firm of Woodard and Curran under contract to design a sewer relocation, as well as a new stormwater system. Right now, the Hancock Lot simply goes into the drain that points right to the old drainage area that once was the Town Brook. Town Brook has been relocated, but those flows do head into that direction. So a brand-new stormwater system is being designed by Woodard and Curran for the city for the benefit of this site, as well as future sites in the entire lot. We can't just plug this building in. We want to plug in, you know, additional sites. And I think if you recall, there's a possibility of four new development sites in this Hancock Lot. The third firm that the city has under contract is BSC Group. And BSC Group has been the city's urban renewal consultant for a number of years now. And BSC Group, although they're not under contract to do any engineering design, we do have them under contract to help us with what we call urban design. And to bring this back around to me interrupting you, Cole, BSC Group, I have my primary representative, Jeff Facher, here, that I am going to ask to say a few words. But BSC Group helped develop the development program for Urban Renewal Amendment 4, where we're looking at all the areas where we can add high-quality public space and new public ground. Those aren't fully designed, right? Those are in-design development, namely, it is going to be the parking garage. Once we figure out the exact sighting, entrances, access, egress, we believe that's going to unlock a lot of the public areas that we then need to connect, you know, the whole entire lot to. So that is in development. We believe through the Desmond parking effort, that is now underway. Again, I've asked Jeff to accompany me here. I am looking for Jeff in the BSC Group to advise this board on this certificate of consistency as it moves forward. Jeff has the unique ability to understand the private development being proposed and also understanding where the public infrastructure is, as well as the garage. And if Jeff wants to step forward and just sort of reintroduce himself and say a few words, that would be great.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Again, Jeff Fasser with the BSC Group, our main office is in Boston, Massachusetts. And we've been fortunate to work with the city for about 10 years now on the downtown urban renewal project. As Rob mentioned, most recently was Amendment 4, but we drafted the very first urban renewal plan, and I've kind of been involved off and on over the years, and most recently, much more involved when Streetworks was no longer the master developer in Crafting Amendment 4, but at the same time, looking at the urban design elements, because Streetworks put a lot of effort into that, and now that they're no longer on the scene, the city wants to make sure that the urban design, the public spaces, et cetera, still meet the standards of what we were all hoping to get from the Streetworks project. I'm a certified planner. I'm a landscape architect. I've been with this project for years. When the first, when the design guidelines were first developed, I was part of that process to review those. And then most recently, again, we've been looking at the urban design elements on the Hancock Lot. So as these individual projects come online, the city knows it's fitting into a much bigger picture. So I'm a resource, happy to help and review things and advise the board, answer any questions you have throughout this review process. But at the same time, the city is still using me to help plug these projects into this lot so that when everything is said and done, there is a grand or great or very accessible and pleasant public spaces in and around all these new developments, which includes the new park that'll be adjacent to this building, but also some interior public space, because people are becoming, you know, flowing in and out of this garage. People will be parking and then pedestrians getting into the downtown area. Why don't make sure that's a comfortable and safe and pleasant movement from the garage into the entire downtown area, not just this one development.
Can I ask you a question, Mr.?
Have a question. Thank you for that.
For me or for?
For you, actually. And is there a plan or a thought that as this lot is developed, we keep in mind that these public spaces are connected in a natural way so that you don't just stumble upon a park out of nowhere versus being on the Waterhand Parkway, having a right of access past this new garage, behind this new development, to this new park? Is that part of the planning? Some intuitive, you know, connection between these public spaces?
That was very much a part of it, yes. As we, could you just flip back to the 3D model? There was a lot of discussion, as both Rob and Jim knows, as we were looking at this area, to make sure that was exactly the case. And so, for example, again, this is the building we're talking about tonight, this park that's beside it, you know, there was a lot of thought in putting that park there because of its visibility from Dennis Ryan, Cottage Street, west of Chestnut and that area. So it's a park that's positioned so that as people enter into this area, they see that green space, they see that public space, so it becomes a draw to them to kind of enter into this area. At the same time, as I mentioned earlier, as people park in the garage and filter into the downtown, they'll see that public space, they'll come out to Dennis Ryan, and then they see how they can get to other spaces. That's also the case into Hancock. There was a lot of discussion about making sure there's a strong connection between this internal space here out to Hancock. This is suggested of it happening at this corner of Cottage and Hancock, another connection here out to Hancock, actually here out to what I still call the concourse. So a number of connections, views and vista corridors throughout. And then all the, well, not all, but many of these buildings will be opening on the state of their backside to an internal public space. So they're all internally connected in that public spaces and connected out in various ways to the city.
Any other questions?
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, but this is, so the existing building here is being razed on the corner of Cottage and Dennis Ryan. Is that correct?
I got that. Yes, yes. The city in Amendment 4 has identified, I believe there was six overall properties that were identified. This is two of them, namely, right where the garage is sited. For those of you that don't know, that was, used to be Cottage Street that cut through from Cottage Ave. to Revere Road. That street was taken, I believe, back in the 1950s by the city to create the Hancock Parking Lot. What they didn't do was remove the sewer line under that street. So when we're contemplating doing a full level of underground parking, those utilities need to get out of the way. There's also the thought of access. Now, Jeff mentioned the concourse road. That was a 30-year roadway that, you know, took, you know, quite a long time to put together. That was a major urban arterial to move cars east to west. One of the design elements for the garage is, we do not want large queuing to get into this garage on Revere Road to block it up and disrupt traffic flow on that east-west movement. So the other idea, you know, as far as relocating utilities, is also, we envision the main entrance to that garage to be internal to the site, meaning, folks would take the turn on to Cottage Ave. from Dennis Ryan, Chestnut Street, and then pull into the garage that way and use the more local roads for any excess queuing during future, you know, rush hours with that garage. So the city is, the city is undertaking the acquisition and demolition of those sites. What's been great about this applicant is he's stepped forward and has agreed to fund the construction and the maintenance of the public spaces around in this corner, not for the entire lot, which would include this area. So that is in the LDA, the land disposition agreement. That's the agreement that is currently before the city council. So I just want to inform this board, I think you already know, that process needs to follow through, it needs to, you know, reach its fulfillment with a vote. through, it needs to, you know, reach its fulfillment with a vote down the road before this board can even vote on this project, on the certificate of consistency. So we did feel it's important, since it's come forward, to get this project going on that track because it's a little bit, as I said, this is the fourth certificate of consistency, but this is the first one with the land disposition agreement where the city is actually in a position, you know, to deliver on some of these new utility and site improvements, you know, for the benefit of not only this project, but all of the development, you know, being proposed for the Hancock Lot.
Just one other quick question. I'm assuming Cottage, which is too narrow, and it's, I'm assuming it's getting a facelift, right?
Cottage, in that area, on that section closest to Chestnut Street, we envision it will be wider, yes, to offer two-way traffic on that end. We don't believe we'll take it down past the existing fours to Hancock Street, but we do envision, yeah, yep, yep.
Could I address that?
No, right ahead.
Again, this is Cottage Street here and the plan, again, for a larger urban design vision for this area is, we are widening Cottage Street because it'll be two-way and again, to facilitate movement in and out of the garage here. We're also, by making it wider, we're able to gain more sidewalk space over on the west of Chestnut side, that's pretty tight right now, they just work with what they have. And then we have some parallel parking here and again, this green space here where those buildings will be coming down. So a wider street, wider sidewalks, and we use that area.
I was going to ask about sidewalks, so thank you. Thank you.
I have a question. And this question actually might be for the department. I mean, it strikes me, and this is great that, you know, we're the development and it seems to be a lot of residential projects in this area which are emerging. And I'm just curious, in terms of the vision for the downtown vision, how are we thinking about other uses, I don't know, technology firms, other types of commercial firms in that area? And I don't know if there's a process or how we approach that, but I'm just curious if we've had some thought in terms of those types of things.
Absolutely. That's a very good question, Member Camiso. What's interesting, even 10 years ago, and Jeff could probably attest to this, you know, the thought was residential on the Hancock Lot. And, you know, a number of those reasons is, you know, due to access mainly off Bergen Parkway and the highway. We also get into a little bit more of a neighborhood with, you know, Miller's Style Road and Revere Road, feeling, you know, residential is probably a more appropriate use. And that sort of has held true, you know, from the original vision plans and then when Streetworks came along and now, you know, that the private market is coming forward with residential in this lot. We are requiring mixed use, so first-floor retail to have an active street area. The Ross Garage redevelopment area has always, you know, we've always thought that is the more commercial zone. And I'm not sure if you've seen the news with the Quincy Hospital, we're really excited about the possibility of seeing some really high-quality commercial development over in the Ross Garage moving forward. And we think, a lot of the interest for commercial has been in more in the Ross Garage side. That's just the way it's been. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Okay.
I'm going to open this up since it is a public area and ask anybody that wishes to speak, just to identify yourself.
Yeah. My name is Jennifer Berson, I live on Self-Bank Hill Road. And just a couple of questions about the garage on this. So number one, this could not be built without the garage, is that a clear statement?
Yes, the LDA agreement is continued off the garage and the other public improvements are being constructed in addition to the development of our center.
So what liability do we have as a city and as a taxpayer who can possibly afford to live there to, if something goes out of sync in terms of the development of the garage?
There's a number of, there's a great deal of language in the land disposition agreement that details all those various steps. That's on my page, ready to explain that.
But how long a hook is the city going to be if something happens with this garage?
Could you, something happens to the garage?
So why does something happen, this garage is not built, this apartment building is ready to occupy?
Right, the project doesn't, to this project, we've, the land disposition agreement before the city council identifies this development group as the designated developer for the garage, meaning they will construct it. There'll be one construction firm in charge of both sites because there'll be, there's a, well, there's a big sub-level of the garage, we don't want a whole level of parking underneath. We couldn't coordinate, you know, it'd be difficult to coordinate both at the same time if they were separate. So both the garage and this proposal are linked together through that LDA.
Again, pretty much every project's gone over, overrun in terms of the expenses or any kind of protections as far as absorbing some of that cost because it's really going to benefit this building more so than anybody else?
Well, the garage currently being contemplated is 650 to 700 spaces. There are arrangements for about 120 some odd spaces for this development, so there's a big benefit for general public parking as well.
So in other words, if something goes south, we are going to work with taxpayers. I'm just, are we sharing any of that responsibility if something goes over? In terms of cost overruns?
GMP.
GMP.
Guaranteed maximum price. Okay, so the concept behind, two things are happening with this foundation. The foundation's applied, okay? So you can have underground. So as Rob said, the only way that you can put these two projects up at the same time and not have building without parking or parking without a way paper, this developer will also lease for a long period of time the parking spaces, a number of parking spaces. Anybody else with the downtown new IDP, anybody that is going to build in this area has to contribute to the parking in that site. We also have to replace all the retail parking, we're building on a parking lot. So right now, all the parking that is currently on the site, it will be used on that site, will be taken up, not all of it, but a portion of it will be taken up for the actual development down the site. So it's important to have vertical parking replace what was once a horizontal parking lot, okay? So each project that comes online will have to participate in the parking plan. And we also have to have additional parking for retail throughout the rest of the center. So the plan, again, that's why you're listening to about 650 to 700 spaces, that's being determined as we look at the uses and the types of uses on that site. We will look at, you have a very narrow building that's going up 15 stories. It provides a lot of housing, a lot of consumers and parking within that narrow, you know, column, if you will. So when you say, will we be on the hook if something doesn't go wrong? There's going to be a guaranteed maximum price, okay? So we know there'll be a surety before we go ahead with that parking garage, like the cost. It isn't going to be a situation where, you know, when you say, we could go over, there'd be a large overrun on the site, okay? The intention and the manner in which this is going to be contracted is that there is a price, that's the price. That is all we're going to pay for that parking garage, okay? And the GMP, not different than what we did at Quincy House, it was a guaranteed maximum price when we built Quincy House. So that's one of your safeguards in that sense. But there will be other participation on that lot, as you noted, or as the proponents have mentioned, you have a lot that is right now, I think it's 3,000, 13,521 feet?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. So that means that flower box that I want, okay. So what we're trying to do, again, is get a maximum value for that particular site, okay? That site being vertical allows other sites on the lot to be utilized for additional development. Those sites will either build parking under their building or they will pay to use the parking inside that parking garage. Probably a little bit of both, okay? But that's the thought going forward. No one gets to say, okay, I'm going to build a building and my people are going to park wherever they want to park. They have to park in a parking garage or provide parking on-site themselves, which is sufficient for the building that they build. Because again, what we're trying to do is make sure that there isn't a parking migration into the neighborhoods where the entire neighborhood's flooded with people that one will avoid paying for parking. Well, one way that you do that is in fact, anybody that builds has to supply parking or pay into the parking building, the parking garage.
And that would continue if there's a change of ownership of the property?
Well, there's a number of other issues that would be discussed in the LDA, which is the land disposition agreement. This is where the city is selling that property to a proponent, okay? Let's assume they don't pay their bills. You can take that building, the tax bill, that's not what we intend to see happen. And these builders aren't going to build this unless you make this thing work as far as an operating cost process, okay? So you won't see it come out of the ground if this thing doesn't work, it wouldn't occur. So what I was trying to say to you before is, you're not going to get halfway through the payroll on that one, okay? That's not what is required within that process. So again, that's why each individual building, just as any other building is built in this city, has its responsibilities. This is going to be private land and they're going to develop after we actually dispose the land to them on that site. So, but I hope that's helping.
LDA continuing to?
Please. I hope everybody's.
Any other, please, sir, just identify yourself.
Phil Stansfield, Connecticut. In extension to her concerns, I have two questions for Mr. Fasson. One, on the current parking revenue that is derived out of expenses from Hancock Lot, is that money meant to continue to flow into the general fund to mitigate property tax, you know, the tax bills in town? Or is that going to be anticipated to be flowing into paying for the new garage? Two, generally, I suspect that the new garage is anticipating some revenue flow from collateral development. What guarantees are there to protect local taxpayers from having direct and indirect costs coming upon them if project development surrounding it does not happen? Specifically, the case of Streetworks LDA, all of the infrastructure that they were talking about, not only was the price guaranteed, the city was not going to have to essentially buy that infrastructure from Streetworks until such time as their property were producing sufficient tax revenue to cover all the costs and other things that were anticipated. I'm not hearing that level of comfort, and in particular, because I think the garage is being built with the expectation of collateral development, it is not necessarily locked in concrete at this point.
It's a good question. The parking revenue that will come from typical folks that'll be coming down to park? Now, as it currently is, pays for a parking program on that site, pays for maintenance on that site. That's what happens on that site, pays for the parking garage. That parking garage will no longer be paid for because there'll be a parking garage. So it's just going to be transferred, that parking revenue will go to pay down the parking lot.
So the surplus revenue will be taken away from contributing to the general fund?
Surplus revenue is a number that changes on an annualized basis?
That I can appreciate, but currently surplus money does flow into the cities.
I wouldn't consider it surplus unless I did a, no, let me just finish, please. Okay? There are costs associated with running the parking lot.
I acknowledge that.
Okay. So surplus revenue above the cost of running the parking lot, I couldn't tell you what that is as I stand here before you, so I'm not going to guess, but I would say that the revenue that's coming off that parking garage is minimal, that parking lot is minimal to the general fund, to minutes.
But my question was, is it anticipated, whatever, the revenue that's coming off that lot will henceforth?
Pay for a parking lot.
So whatever current revenue, less expenses than is left over from running that lot that can go into the general fund is going to be?
And that's, I would say yes, but I would also say that there'll be a little bit more activity, a little bit more going on in the downtown, and a whole lot more revenue coming